Please stand for the Translegions.
A Translegion is a superpower of the United States of America and to their public coverage, what a nation under God into this all with the religion of justice.
Hi, everyone up there and people watching at home, welcome. We'll call clerk.
Trustee Bailey.
Here.
Trustee Clancy.
Here.
Trustee Angler.
Here.
Trustee Fedora.
Here.
Trustee Germany.
Here.
Trustee Gilbert.
Here.
And Mayor Matani.
I am here. Okay, next item is Discover Mokina. Joe Warner's Veterans Garage Chili Cook-Off, Mr. Roberts.
Hello.
Hey, Jim. It's like a replay here, almost a year ago, I came in front of the board and introduced myself, so again, I'll introduce myself, I'm Jim Roberts, I'm a volunteer at Joe Warner's Veterans Garage. To give you a little background on the Veterans Garage, Joe started this many years ago, he had two locations in Mokina, eventually he relocated to Fosen, and unfortunately after he passed, we moved to Manteno, the veterans home, and that's where we're at now. So over the last couple of years since Joe's been gone, we've been building relationships and sponsors to help fund us with what we do. So coming up in November, and the purpose and reasons that I'm really here is to talk about a chili cook-off we're going to have. Joe used to have these every year in Mokina, and we didn't run one the last couple of years, but this year we're going to be having a Joe Warner's Veterans Garage Chili Cook-Off. It's going to take place in New Lennox at the American Legion Home on Cedar on November 15th from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. You send hours entry, and with that you'll get a hot dog, chips, and you'll get to taste all the chilies. We're currently looking at between 20 and 30 chilies, we have about 20 submitted, and I guess there's quite a few that show up at the last minute that don't tell us they're going to be there. So, as an entry, you come in, you'll be able to get, for example, all the chilies you want, you'll evaluate them, and you'll get three tickets, and you'll put it into the buckets that you rate 1, 2, and 3. We'll also have live music there, we're going to have a 50/50, and we'll have a lot of basket raffles and things like that. So it should be a good time, and the reason I wanted to come here and talk tonight is to invite the community out to it. These things are successful when people participate, and we have a lot of people that did donations to us, and that's great, but you can't grow in having a event like this if people won't actually come out and try your chilies. So I'm looking forward to hopefully real good support throughout Mokina, hopefully some of you will get the nerve to enter your favorite chili, and we'll see how it stacks up, I'll be entering my favorite chili, and I'm going to try to stack the deck a little bit, but I'll nip up my name in front of it, and maybe pay an extra entry fee to help me swing my way. No, but it should be a great time, the money that we raise will go to fund the Veterans Garage. We do a lot of summer events mostly, the July 4th parade we're here this year in Mokina, sometimes do three or four events a day, all veterans, veteran events, and we also do a lot of community events outside of that. I met in Mokina, I already met with the chief, I went to the department district, the police department, or the fire department, Melissa, I went into the chamber and talked to them, so I've tried to get the word out the best I can, and for people that are interested in coming and entering a chili, all you have to do is go on the Veterans Garage website, and you'll see a little flyer, kind of like this, there's a camera, and you scan the QR code, and you can enter the chili. If you don't want to enter chili, you just want to show up, then you just skip to the door, and you can buy your entry ticket there, and it should be a great time. That's about it, I want to thank all of you for your time, and hope to see some of you out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Jim, I remember when Joe Warner used to have those, they were outstanding, a lot of participation, enthusiasm, they were great, I'm glad you're continuing that.
Yeah, yeah, we're looking forward to it, we haven't done it in a couple of years, so.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
All right, next up is community calendar, Clerk Martini.
What's the community calendar for October 2025? October 31st is our trick-or-treat hours, and the village of Mokina is from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. November 2025, November 3rd is the Mokina Fire Department CPR class, it's from 5:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at 19853 South Wolf Road. For more information and/or register online at mokinafire.org or at station number one. November 4th is a recycle day, November 8th is coffee with the mayor at Clancy's Coffee, Coffee Roasters, wow, 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. at 19931 Wolf Road. November 10th, the village board trustee meeting is at 7:00 p.m. at the village hall, and November 10th is also the second fall free leaf and branch pickup, it's for bags of leaves and bundled branches. New Way will continue to pick up all other yard waste and grass clippings through the end of November, you can call 708-479-3900 or visit www.mokina.org to sign up.
Thank you, Clerk Martini.
You're welcome.
Next up is public comments, anybody here for public comment? Not all at one time? All right, thank you, consent agenda, Mr. Tomasowski.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening ladies and gentlemen, two items out of the consent agenda this evening, the iris files. First item is a motion to approve the semi annual review of closed session minutes and define that the need for confidentiality exists for all remaining closed session minutes and verbatim recording is not previously approved pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2.06 subsection D. Second item is a motion to approve the minutes from the October 13th, 2025 board meeting and work session.
Thank you, Mr. Tomasowski. Martini, I mean, I'm sorry, motion please.
Move to approve consent agenda items 6A and B as depicted in the October 23rd, 2025 request for board action prepared by the village administrator.
Second.
Motion probably second, Clerk Martini.
Trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Fedora.
Aye.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
And Trustee Gilbert.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next up is proclamation for National Family Literacy Day, Clerk Martini. Do we have somebody here for that? Okay.
You need to sign.
Okay.
It's the village of Mokina proclamation for National Family Literacy Day. Whereas, National Family Literacy Day, established by the 103rd Congress in 1994, and now marking its 31st anniversary on November 1st, 2025, highlights the importance of reading and learning for the entire family, and emphasizes the impact that parents have on their child's learning. And whereas, this day is celebrated across America each year, and focuses on special activities and events that showcase the importance of family literacy programs that empower families and build a nation of readers. And whereas, literacy programs across the United States will observe National Family Literacy Day by holding read-a-thons, book drives, workshops, and family activities at schools, libraries, and community centers to encourage literacy. And whereas, as many as one in six adults struggle with reading and writing, and by learning to read, individuals can gain self-respect and confidence and strive towards goals that otherwise would not be achievable. And whereas, the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is a nonprofit, non-political volunteer women's service organization dedicated to prompting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through better education for children and adults. And whereas, education being one of the cornerstones of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is committed to increasing literacy by promoting and supporting literacy programs. Now, therefore, we proclaim that I, George J. Matanius, village president of the village of Mokina, Will County, Illinois, hereby extend this proclamation to the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution on behalf of the board of trustees and all other citizens, and hereby proclaim November 1st, 2025, as National Family Literacy Day in the village of Mokina, proclaim this 27th day of October, 2025.
Thank you, Clerk, do you have anything to add?
Just thank you for reading this proclamation, it's very important for families for literacy. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have old business, non-home rule municipal retailers, I can read, John Tomasowski.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Clerk. I refer to the board here as a follow-up from our work session here last Monday with respect to a half-cent sales tax increase. So as we talk about this topic and go, before we go forward, let's go back a little bit here, sales tax history of the village of Mokina, first very quickly with state law, state law changed approximately 1999, where non-home rule municipalities could do a half-cent sales tax increase, up to a full cent here by sales tax referendum. So through discussions that the then-mayor and board staff had, ultimately for funding for roads back then, you go back to 1999, think of the village of Mokina, doubled in size roughly, and population was looking to double in size again, was the anticipation which ultimately happened. So the concern was keeping up the road system and the infrastructure in good condition, not having a funding source to do it, wanting to use the half-cent sales tax. So during that time, other considerations were property taxes, to max all the property taxes here for the residents of the villages as a way to try to fund that, one in utility taxes, a gas and electric tax, which would be 5%, added to those utilities, and a half-cent sales tax were the three main increases considered at that time. So you go back then, the sales tax base was 6.5% as opposed to 7% today, so this is 2000, 2000, 2001 comparisons, as you can see what Mokina was in the neighboring communities, looks a little different with a couple of communities that are partially Cook County and Will County, so it has a different sales tax than those as well. Then why this funding source, and this is information once again right from 2001, least intrusive on village residents, the village resident gets to make the decision whether they want to purchase that for that sales tax amount, shared by non-residents, based on a user pay system, it excluded groceries and medicines as defined by the state statute. Over time, revenue will grow, which will keep up with the cost of the improvements, and at that time, they were looking at $800,000 to $1 million in that half-cent sales tax, and more equitable than property or utility taxes. So therefore, at that time, it had the support of the mayor and board for the sales tax referendum, which ultimately did pass there in 2001, created that funding source that we still use today for our road system. Now you come to a present day, what has changed in Mokina, obviously from growing to a mature community, meaning much established, yes, we have some room left for some smaller residential growth and some commercial growth, but for the most part, we're a developed community. Now, what does that mean, good and bad? One of the challenges or differences you have to do now is for revenue sources, as tap-on fees and building permits are nothing like the great days of a lot of growth and development here. The water sewer capital funds, by terms of financial orphans, they've been helped up by the general fund surplus through time, been the main source over the years is tap-on fees, and being a younger system throughout the earlier years, didn't need a lot of attention here from improvements. And over the last seven years, what has changed here in the village is we're now completing significant capital projects. Our wastewater treatment plan improvements were just over 11.2 million, big portion of that was funded by tap-on fees that was saved up for years, and the other significant portion was from general funds, so it did have to dip and did have to add that into the water sewer rates. Next big one we did was the police station, and approximately 18.2 million, the bulk of that was paid for by surplus from the general fund, a promissory note taken out for $4,750,000, paid by the general fund here as well. And next up is village hall. So as part of that, and where the village sits today, general fund can no longer be the big brother to the other funds. Couple of those reasons as previously discussed, but now this past year from the state, the use tax reduction by per capita, the village lost approximately $45,000 here in this fiscal year, and that trend here will go forward. The tax levy, property tax rate, the village, we'll talk about the tax levy here for this coming year, the village elected officials for many, many years do not want to overburden the residents and the businesses with high taxes, understand the challenges of Illinois as it is, so try to keep that at a low rate, almost the lowest here in Will County. Other challenges of inflation, local government distributive fund, revenues distributed are just under 20% of what municipalities are entitled to by statute, so some challenges here from the state level here as well, as we see coming forward. Now, the legal authority here for this has changed just like it did in 1999, August 5th, 2024, the Illinois General Assembly passed legislation allowing non-home rule municipalities, which Mokina is, to impose a 1% sales tax without a referendum. We have the half cents now at 7.5%, so in theory, there's a half cent left. This tax amends the Illinois Municipal Code, and right below it, very technically from the statute, is what it's allowed to do. To fund the corporate authorities of the non-home rule municipality, May until June 1st, 2031, use the proceeds of the tax for expenditure on municipal operations, in addition or into or remove any expenditure on public infrastructure. And for property tax relief, public infrastructure, one of our main concerns here going forward is funding here for the capital programs for our water and sewer systems. The scope of the tax, just like the half cents now, applies to general merchandise, does not apply to groceries, prescription drugs, or titled properties, or titled property, excuse me, and the revenue is collected by the Illinois Department of Revenue, IDR, and distributed to the village after processing. History's repeated itself, as we kind of talked here from 1999 here to 2025, looking at challenges looking forward, as we're looking back in 1999 to the road system, how to properly maintain it to keep it in very excellent shape here moving forward, we're looking at that same challenge here for the water sewer system for the foreseeable future, and what is the best way to fund those long-term improvements. So Mokina is entering that new chapter of mature built-out community, revenue from our growth, although it has naturally declined, and we're using a chart here to illustrate some of that coming up. The half-cent sales tax ensures the village's core services are maintained by spreading the cost to both residents and non-residents instead of solely relying on local property taxpayers or utility costs. Now, an example here of tap-on fees, loss revenue example, a couple of things to note, this is by no means indicating this is the biggest tap-on year for the village, it wasn't, growth was not at its peak at this point, but it looks here since fiscal 12 moving forward. Another thing to note is the tap-on fee goes up every year, so that's compounded, something decided here by the mayor and board, lowest is 1.5% through this process, and the highest has been 3% annually on that process. So obviously, the money, the number in 2012 would look differently in 2025 for those same tap-on fees. But as an example, in the six-year period, just over 6.6 million in tap-on fees here through that time period, you come here forward to this last six years, just over 2.8, and the trend going forward is this number fiscal year 25, this number and lower going forward is what we see naturally with the lack of area here for new growth. Trustee for, or trustee John Mazeron, his comments on approval of the village's last comprehensive plan on its 12th, 2002, thanked the residents who worked on the new comprehensive plan, irony is, we're working on a new comprehensive plan again. He said 57% of all sales tax revenue received in the village comes from new construction. This will decrease dramatically when the town is built up in another 10 to 15 years, and this commercial property will provide revenue to the taxing bodies and help keep property taxes down. Obviously, that statement proved to be very true here, and now the challenge here, challenge and the evolution of becoming a built-out community. Long road to village halls, we called it, and the challenge here of building these operations, whether it be wastewater treatment plant, or a beautiful new police station, and what's next here is the village hall, without wanting to do that with taking out money, borrowing that money and trying to pay for, if not all, a substantial portion of it through saved up general fund surplus, also that money then cannot go to the water sewer capital projects as well. And highlighted here in the bottom right corner is that maintaining our strong financial status, which currently sits at AA+ bond rating, and the police pension fund is just at over 80%. So to maintain these sorts of things, build them, maintain them, keep this sort of financial status, a change here in our financial structure or taxing would be necessary to do so. Highlighting, this is from our last budget presentation here for this fiscal year, looking at that half-cent sales tax, which is in our capital infrastructure, which funds the road programs, very conservatively here for this year, that half cent, this is what this red line represents annually, this is what we projected to finish at 2005, as we traditionally do, and we hope that these are little conservative figures, we're trending towards about just over 4.2% this year, but that's what was projected, so another half cent, we're going approximately that same amount here, with the mayor and board were so inclined. Now, looking at today, instead of 1999 through 2001 numbers for sales tax, the payed community changed from 6.5% to 7%, we didn't get that extra half cent, but it did change, and so this is our local neighbors, and once again, there's a Cook and Will portion, so not necessarily highest to lowest, but you can see where we sit, so if we did go from 7.5% to 8%, which is legally allowed, it would bring us up to the next lowest, which in this case would be Frankfurt, that's one of our neighbors. Now, if you want to look at it from a little bigger, broader perspective, all of Will County, you can see we're highlighted over here, certainly not going to read every cat, every name here on it, some of these communities, as indicated, are in parts of Cook and Will County, so you can see the difference starts at the 10.2%. Works this way, when you go down to the nines, to the eights, and it's done by quarter percent, so you can see some 8.75, 8.5s, 8.25s, then the group of eights, 7.75, 7.5s, where you can see there is this group that is at the 7% below that. Other options, I mean, are very similar, that's why we kind of went back in time and looked at it that way, other options when you're looking at water sewer capital versus road, excuse me, is once again, property taxes, and we'll deal with the tax levy tonight, and the mayor and board had their discussion and their goal philosophically not trying to overtax here the residents in their properties, but we'll read the property tax number off later this evening. Utility taxes, once again, it's 5%, it's gas, electric, and gas, and once again, the difference, the only added difference here from 1999 to 2001 is the water sewer rates. You can certainly, for water sewer capital, you can certainly build that directly into the rate, the same conclusion this mayor and board had as they did back in approximately here 25 years ago, is these three all directly impact the residents and businesses directly, for the sales tax, there's the added value of naturally, our residents shop in other places besides Mokina, vice versa, other folks come here to shop in our wonderful businesses as well. The actual process for this to occur is the village board must have an ordinance imposing the tax and submit it to the Illinois Department of Revenue, IDOR, that ordinance must be filed with the IDOR for the tax to take effect. It just so happens that this happens twice a year, so if it was passed now, the actual tax would take effect July 1st, 2026. So a summary here from this presentation, it'd be a half-cent sales tax equals 50 cents on a $100 purchase, every dollar collected now because it'd be that full dollar, 50 cents in theory would go to repair the roads, the other 50 cents would be to upgrade water sewer systems and maintain essential village facilities, and the mayor and board would deem anything else appropriate. This approach protects the homeowners by keeping property taxes stable and easing pressure on future rate increases, especially for the water sewer rates. The additional revenue ensures Mokina can continue making necessary capital investments to maintain strong infrastructure, and Mokina's strong fiscal position is backed by disciplined planning, allowing the village to responsibly preserve what has been built, maintaining safe, vibrant community for the long term. Mayor, I'll hand it back to you for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Tomasowski. Motion please.
Move to approve the village of Mokina ordinance number 2025-0-025, and ordinance amending village of Mokina ordinance 2001-0-43, implementing a retailer's occupation tax and a service occupation tax of 1% within the village of Mokina effective April 1st, 2026, and to authorize village president and village clerk to execute say.
Second.
Wait, motion probably second, any questions from the board? Okay, Clerk Martini.
From trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Fedora.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Gilbert.
Aye.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
And trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda, we have electric bikes, scooters, golf carts, and low-speed vehicle ordinances, Chief Brian Button.
Mayor and board, you may recall that at the July 28th, 2025 work session, the board discussed how best to regulate e-bikes, electric scooters, golf carts, other low-speed vehicles within the village. While opinions varied at that time on the level of regulation, there was a general consensus that some clear, enforceable, and locally consistent standards were necessary to ensure safe operation in accordance with bill and law. And before we get into the particulars of the ordinance that we discussed, I'd like to take a little bit of time here to recap what we talked about in the work session, as well as educate the public on what we're doing and why we're doing it. Again, the types of vehicles that we considered were low-speed e-bikes, low-speed electric scooters, and then what's considered by state law as non-highway vehicles, meaning golf carts, ATVs, off-highway motorcycles. To define a low-speed electric bike, the bikes that are lawfully allowed in Illinois have a motor with no more than 750 watts, they have to, there's three different classes, but they have to be below 750 watts, and they must have operable pedals, they can't just have foot pegs, they must be labeled with the classification, either 1, 2, or 3, with a top assisted speed as well as the motor wattage to be legal. And under state law, they are not permitted on sidewalks, they have to be driven on the street or a bike path. E-bikes and bicycles must all follow the rules of the road, they must be equipped with right front headlight and a rear mirror reflector just like a regular bicycle and operate in it at night. Again, three classes, a class one is a pedal assist that also has the electric function, it stops once the bike reaches 20 miles an hour, so that's the top speed for a class one, and right now, there's currently no age requirement to drive them. A class two has a throttle assist, which means it can be operated without pedaling the pedals, but again, once that motor gets up to 20 miles per hour, it caps it there. And again, for class two, there is no age requirement to ride under state law. And again, for class two, there is no age requirement to ride under state law. Now, the class three is a pedal assist with a motor that gets up to a speed of 28 miles per hour, so evolved more than the first two. And for this one, under state law, riders must be at least 16 years of age to ride The problem we have with that is, since e-bikes are not legally allowed on the sidewalks, and we have children that are under 16 years old driving them, they have not likely educated themselves or learned the rules of the road yet. They haven't gone through driver's ed, and so what we see is kids out there driving bikes that can go up to 20 miles an hour in and out of traffic without having the proper safety training and education. So the increase, the number of incidents involving these near misses or accidents has increased exponentially over the last three years, not just in our village, but in surrounding villages as well. And of course, it's very difficult for a motorist to predict how a cyclist is going to be turning or moving if they don't even know the rules of the roads, but creates an added danger for our motor and public as well. So the scooters, now, the scooters can be permitted on streets or sidewalks in Illinois if the village wants to allow it to pass an ordinance to do so. The riders of these scooters have to be 18 years of age or older, so no kids are allowed. And this is a point of contention in a lot of municipalities that have passed an ordinance allowing e-scooters. Why does a kid that's 16 need to drive a car that has to be 18 to drive a scooter? I don't know the state's logic for it, but I can only assume it's because of the increased safety risk that's proposed when you're on a scooter going as fast as some of these can go without the protection of a seatbelt or airbags or anything like that that a car does have. So again, if the board chooses to allow low-speed electric scooters, they would have to be for only 18 years of age or older on roads with speed limits of 30 miles an hour or less, just like a bike, it would require a front light and a rear reflector. They'll only be driven by one person at a time, and again, because they create such a small profile, they're less visible for drivers, it's an increased safety risk. Now, the non-highway vehicles we talked about, these are lumped together under state law, and ATVs, dirt bikes, mini bikes, golf carts, anything that typically is not seen driving on the roads. Now, there was no general consensus to allow dirt bikes or ATVs or other mini bikes, any peg-type motorcycle activities, but there was some discussion from the board about allowing golf carts. We do have a large number of requests from our residents to be able to drive a golf cart if they have all the proper safety features within their subdivisions. If the board wants to do so, you can authorize golf carts on our streets with certain restrictions. Again, Illinois law currently prohibits, prohibits the vehicles from being driven unless the local government authorizes it through an ordinance. So again, if we chose to do that tonight, a non-highway vehicle would only be permitted on roads with speeds of under 35 miles an hour.
Okay. 25 miles an hour, is that right?
Oh, that's a type.
Done with the golf carts?
Yeah, that was a type. It was supposed to be 25, sorry.
Right, okay.
It's 25 in the ordinance. Okay, so we did also discuss the difference between a low-speed vehicle and a golf cart. Right now, low-speed vehicles are currently allowed under Illinois law. They're plated, they have all the safety features, stop regulated windshields, airbags, and so there's no action that needs to be taken for low-speed vehicles. But again, if the board wishes were to allow the golf carts, here this one is accurate, on streets typically ranging 20 to 25 miles per hour, that'll be included in the proposed ordinance tonight. Again, this is some of the differences between low-speed vehicles and golf carts. If the public is interested in getting a vehicle such as this to drive on their subdivision, they should know that the low-speed vehicles, though probably a little bit more expensive, are much safer to be driven. They already come equipped with all the necessary safety features that you'd need, and so again, a little bit more money, but I just want to put that out there for the public that maybe think about purchasing one of these, it's a much safer option for you. This is a summary chart of what basically everything I just said, pertaining to bikes, scooters, golf carts, low-speed vehicles, shows what the state law, the baseline is for them. It shows what we either must allow or must prohibit. Again, to recap, if we want to do nothing tonight, then e-bikes and e-scooters and golf carts are not permissible to be driven in the village. But if we choose to allow them, that's the right column here, you can authorize based on the ordinance how you want them to be used and what. So we did some comparison with some of our surrounding communities to try to see who allows what, what action has been taken. You can see that some, you know, there's a lot of variety in who allows what. Our neighbors to the east of us there, Frankfurt, they don't allow golf carts or scooters, but Nurex does allow golf carts. So there's no one set standard choice here. It's up to the board, which is on how we want to do it. Some put certain restrictions on, for the example of the e-bikes. In Plainfield, they just passed this a month or so ago, where the riders must be 14 years of age, and if they're under 18, they must be wearing a helmet. Frankfurt does allow only class one e-bikes, but they require the rider to be 16 years of age. So there's different opinions here on how to permit it. As I said, we're starting to notice an increase of encounters with the e-vehicles, whether complaints, accidents, you know, these aren't all accidents up there, but it just shows the increase in calls for service that were experienced. When you look at 2023, we only had three calls for service with an e-bike. In 2024, eight. When this slide was put together about two months ago, we already had 16, as of 2025. So you see how exponential the calls for service and the contacts with these vehicles are occurring. So again, we believe it's time to get an ordinance on the books so we can regulate them, give our officers clear direction on how to enforce the law, but also it's to educate the public on the safety issues that we're having with them. A lot of parents are letting their kids ride these, thinking it's just a simple bicycle, not realizing, you know, the context that police are having with these vehicles. So the proposed ordinance that we're, you're gonna have in front of you tonight, here's a summary of it, basically allows e-bikes on all of those streets and bike paths. We're proposing that for class one and two e-bikes, we don't want to limit children from using them, but we're concerned for their safety, so we're proposing that if you ride by your kid on e-bike, anyone 16 and under, the parents must accompany them so they can assure them that they are adherent to the rules of the road. We can't allow them on sidewalks. That is a state law, so we don't have the authority to override. And again, they must follow all regular Illinois bicycle rules, including headlights and safety reflectors and what have you. The scooters, we're proposing that they basically conform with the state law. Drive on streets up to 30 miles an hour, must be 18 years old, with a driver's license. We do have an exemption in the ordinance still. Some of these small scooters that the kids ride that are not completely powerful electric ones, we wanted to make sure there was an exemption so that they're still allowed to drive those on the sidewalk and cul-de-sacs. Again, the large scooters, the adult scooters are not allowed on sidewalks or multi-use paths, and they must have headlights on them. Golf carts, we're proposing that they're permitted, which moves on residential streets of under 25 miles an hour. They can drive them if the operator has a valid license with insurance. They cannot go out onto the collector or arterial roads to the business districts except across the street. They must have white signals, seatbelts, mirrors, the safety reflector emblem on the back, just what the law requires. And again, like I said, the low-speed vehicles, we don't need to take any action for us since they're already permitted under state law. So again, you have a copy of the proposed ordinance, and I have to give credit to attorney Buck, who did a lot of work on this presentation as well and helped to draft the ordinance. So based on the consensus, the board staff recommends the mayor and board trustees adopt the attached ordinance, approval of this ordinance. It will create a uniform regulatory framework, consistent with Illinois law, will allow enforced safe, enhance safety and clarity throughout the community. Should the board concur, an appropriate motion would be entered.
Thank you, chief. Motion, please.
Move to approve village and Mokina ordinance 2025-0-026, and ordinance regulating electric bikes, electric scooters, golf carts, and low-speed vehicles in the village of Mokina, and to authorize village president and village clerk to execute same.
Second.
Motion probably second. Any questions for the board? Clark Martini?
Trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Fedora.
Aye.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
Trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
And trustee Gilbert.
Aye.
Motion passed. Here's my chief.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you, chief.
Yeah. There was a lot of work done between John, Carl, and the chief to get this together. I was involved in some of those meetings, but they did the work, so thank you. Next item, we have 2025 tax levy announcement, Mr. Tomaszowski.
Thank you, mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, in accordance with state statute, the village of Mokina is publicly announcing the proposed 2025 aggregate tax levy for the village of Mokina. At the October 20, 2025 work session, the village board directed staff to proceed with a levy calculation that includes a 2.5% CPI of new growth through the 2025 tax year. Based on that direction, the village's anticipated 2025 aggregate tax levy is $2,301,425. This reflects an increase of approximately $64,210 over last year's tax levy, driven by the CPI and real growth. This announcement satisfies the statutory requirement that the intended levy amount be publicly stated, recorded in the minutes prior to consideration of the final levy ordinance. The final 2025 tax levy ordinance will be presented to the village board for adoption at its meeting on November 24, 2025. Therefore, there is no requested action to be done by the village board.
Thank you, Tomaszowski. Next item is fiscal year 2026, PCC pavement patching, additional quantity recommendations. Mr. Volklund.
Thank you, mayor. Back in September, we awarded the fiscal year 26 Portland cement concrete patching program, which is our patching annually that we do on Wolf Road. At that time, it was awarded for approximately 220 square yards of concrete patching. It was awarded to the Little Better PT Farrell Construction in the amount of $97,950. The locations that were selected for our patching this year were three locations in the street peaking over the summer that we previously leveled and then temporarily asphalt patched at three different locations prior to our July parade activities. Following that award, staff worked with the contractor and examined those locations, and it was evident that due to the underlying cracking underneath that temporary patching, that additional pavement removal would probably be likely. Therefore, staff is recommending authorization to utilize an additional $30,000 that's budgeted for emergency patchwork to increase the overall quantity of patching that we would do as part of, possible for part of this project, and then the appropriate motion is before to consider.
Thank you, Mr. Volklund. Motion, please.
Move to award additional work under contract change order for the fiscal year 2026 PCC pavement patching project to the prior lowest bidder, PT Farrell Construction of Joeyette, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $30,000, with a total contract amount of $127,950, and to authorize village president and village clerk to execute same.
Second.
Motion probably second. Any questions from the board? Nancy, Clark Martini?
Okay, trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Fedora.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Gilbert.
Aye.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
And trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda, we have Wendy Reed, 19906 Wolf Road special use permit request. And that would be Mr. Volklund.
No. Mr. Kent.
Oh. I'm sorry. Mr. Ben Kent.
Thank you, mayor.
I confuse you guys a lot.
Welcome, Miss Wendy Reed, I should say. Unfortunately, Miss Wendy Reed was unable to make it tonight, but we do want to welcome her project back. The next three projects, they do show an expedited process, and so I do want to just focus on that just for a minute, that getting these projects through the system, getting them through the process, and getting them back to the board, is quicker than it's been in the past, and we are trying to continue to do that and to continue to bring these back to you as expeditiously as we can. So with that, this evening, Miss Wendy Reed, property owner, 19906 Wolf Road, Unit B. This is a little bit of a cleanup project. This site has been used over the years for a number of items, and most specifically, they've been for some light industrial uses, and over time, that has become the most, the use that is most prevalent. Unfortunately, with the current zoning, that is not allowed. So as we began to talk with the applicant, and we began to talk with, and looked through past files and past documents, we realized that the zoning and what was actually being used there didn't quite align, and so this evening, there is before you a special use permit for a planned unit development that will allow the tenants to operate either an auto repair facility or a contractor's trade office and outdoor storage, which had typically been these tenants in the B section of this unit. Built in the 1950s, property was consistently supported by a mix of commercial and light industrial, and this is where you can see the uses from bakery and grocery, garage storage, all the way down to power solutions, which was sale of generators. So getting into that lighter industrial, Unit B is in the western portion of the property, so that is the only piece that's being discussed this evening. Unit A, which is an extension insurance, that will remain with the current zoning and no changes to be included this evening. The approval would have a few components that would be added. There is a fence, 43-foot fence, that would be added to provide for some screening. All screening requirements would have to be met, so there is no variation on the screening requirements. And the special use would allow for an automobile repair facility, contractor's trade office, and these are the typical uses that have been seen over the years, and the proposed uses would be consistent with the immediate prior use that was within the facility about a year and a half ago. Village Board Concept, September 22, the board did hear this item, and favorable opinion to move forward in the plan commission. Plan commission hearing was held on October 16. We did have a public hearing, and that evening, we had a plan commission recommended approval back to the board, and they agreed that the outdoor storage must be screened and free of hazardous materials. So that is just something that I wanted to be clear on, the outdoor storage must meet all of our code and requirements. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor for consideration.
Thanks, Mr. Kent. Motion, please.
Move to approve ordinance number 2025-0-027, granting approval of a planned unit development and special use permit, and allow for tenants to operate either an auto repair or contractor's trade office and outdoor storage at 19906 Wolf Road, Unit B, and to authorize village president and village clerk to execute same.
Second.
Motion probably second. Any questions for the board? Nancy, Clark Martini?
Trustee Angler.
Aye.
Trustee Fedora.
Aye.
Trustee Germany.
Aye.
Trustee Gilbert.
Aye.
Trustee Bailey.
Aye.
And trustee Clancy.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is 185 Old School House Barn. Mr. Kent.
Thank you, mayor. The board, we do have the applicant, Mr. George Patterson here to my left, so I want to thank him for coming out this evening. This project has also gone through the steps needed to get to the village board to action consideration tonight. Property is located at 19501 School House Road, and the applicant is seeking approval for a special use permit for a PUD that would include provisions for a garage barn and expanded driveway. The property is currently zoned I-1, and with this request this evening, the property would be rezoned to an estate residential. Roughly 2,100 square feet of detached garage is being composed, three separate garage doors, and each with a driveway. Also, the plan includes 100 amp sum panel to be fed from the home. Also, the plan includes 100 amp sun panel to be fed from the home. So this is a significant improvement to the property and to the property owner, and this was all the result of a storm just about a year ago, a little over a year ago, that took down the barn, the historical barn that had been there for many, many years. Here is a photo of the proposed barn. The barn siding will be wood. It will be painted, and it will appear a typical wood-sided barn. The roof, although it does say shingles here, it will be a metal roof, and there will also be a cupola that will be added to the center of the facility. So the zoning will become E-1, the size of 750 square feet allowance that is being accepted out. They allow the construction of the garage barn on the existing foundation that is part of the PUD. And then the cupola on the roof to allow the height variance. And then memorialize the existing accessory use structures and driveways on the site, and that I want to be very clear on. It essentially brings this entire site into conformity with our current codes by doing this this evening. September 15, it was brought through concept and favorable opinion that evening. Plan commission hearing on October 16, favorable opinion that evening as well, and the committee voted to bring it back to the board for consideration this evening, and that's where we're at. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Motion, please.
Move to approve ordinance number 2025-0-028, granting special use permit for planned unit development and rezoning to E-1 estate residence on the property located at 19501 Schoolhouse Road. Based on the terms and conditions therein stated, and to authorize village president and village clerk to execute same.
Second.
Motion, probably second. Any questions for the board?
If I could, Mayor, I just wanted to acknowledge some of Mr. Paslan's neighbors, who I felt were instrumental in this process. Cynthia Knight, Tony Tarala, and Sam Bettenhausen, they just provided a lot of good input first at the work session, and then also through some emails. And I just think that's an important part of the process, is hearing from our residents. So I thank you to them.
Thanks, neighbor. Anybody else?
Mayor, I'd like to say that I lived here for 35 years, and that property has not been maintained. There's not been a code paint put on that part. It's never been worked on. It's never been repaired. And now, since the barn's been removed, the weeds have grown out of control. The property's not maintained. It hasn't been, and it hasn't been since the barn went down. And I don't think, straying from all these variances without having asphalt driveways and side yard setbacks and all these allowances that we are allowing, it's not setting a good presence for the village. That's all I got to say, Mayor.
Thank you. Clerk Martini?
Trustee Angler.
Hi.
Trustee Fedora.
Hi.
Trustee Germany.
No.
Trustee Gilbert.
No.
Trustee Bailey.
Hi.
Trustee Clancy.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor, and the board.
Okay, next item on the agenda is CrossFit Ruah Special Use Permit for Commercial Indoor Recreation. This would be Mr. Kim.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. The request this evening is from CrossFit Ruah. They are seeking a positive recommendation from, should not say, plan commission to the village board. It should be village board this evening for proposed special use permit for commercial indoor recreation. So what is occurring here is we have an I-1 building that is looking to have a use that is not allowed strictly by code. However, these uses are found across town, and these are typical for uses that we see in the I-1 zoning district. September 8, 2025, the village board did conceptually review this, and it was moved forward to the plan commission. On October 16, the plan commission reviewed, and they did provide a recommendation to bring it back to the board with the stipulation that they wanted amplified sound music from being heard by the adjacent units. And they suggested soundproofing would need to be installed in order to do that. So that is one of the, the only stipulation that the plan commission did provide. Business plan, it's a high-intensity workout, so this is a standard that we've had in several other I-1 zoning districts. Structured group classes, 60 minutes with some time in between, and the time in between is important for the parking. There are 115 parking stalls provided for the building, and 12 spaces are required for CrossFit. So we, after doing the parking counts and the offset of the classes, there is ample parking for this facility. With that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Motion, please.
Move to approve ordinance number 2025-0-029, granting special use permit for commercial indoor recreation on the property located at 18811 90th Avenue, Unit B. Based on the terms and conditions therein stated, and to authorize village president and village clerk to execute same.
Second.
Motion, probably second. Any questions for the board? Nancie, Clerk Martini?
Trustee Angler.
Hi.
Trustee Fedora.
Hi.
Trustee Bailey.
Hi.
Trustee Clancy.
Hi.
Trustee Gilbert.
Hi.
And Trustee Germany.
Hi.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item is new business, construction-related services agreement, wastewater treatment plant, Dan Moklin.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, back in August, the village awarded a contract for 2025 wastewater treatment plant SCADA project. This project is for our wastewater treatment facilities, and it was in regards to some critical electronic control components that affect our SCADA system. SCADA is for the supervisory control and data acquisition. The village proposes, as is typical, that as we enter into this project, that we engage an engineering consulting firm to provide the construction-related services or construction engineering for a project of this nature. The firm would handle project management, site supervision, factor acceptance to some of the electronic components, as well as coordinate the programming and integration of the electronic components, as well as operational startup. The engineering firm proposed is Strand and Associates, who actually performed the original design engineering, is being recommended to perform this work for us. This contract would be structured on an hourly basis with an amount not to exceed $45,000, and that's roughly just under 4% of the overall construction amount, which is just over 1.3 million. Therefore, staff is recommending that we award the construction-related services to Strand as proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Bullock. Motion, please.
Move to authorize a professional engineering services agreement in an amount not to exceed $45,000 between the Village of Mokina and Strand and Associates, Inc., an Illinois corporation for construction-related services for the 2025 wastewater treatment plant SCADA project, and to authorize village president and village clerk to execute same.
Second.
Motion, probably second. Any questions from the board? Nancie, Clerk Martini?
Trustee Angler.
Hi.
Trustee Fedora.
Hi.
Trustee Germany.
Hi.
Trustee Gilbert.
Hi.
Trustee Bailey.
Hi.
And Trustee Clancy.
Hi.
Motion passed. Next item is village administration comments. Mr. Tomasowski.
Mayor, we'll have the chief do the statistics.
Thank you, Mr. Tomasowski. So we'd just like to highlight a recent accomplishment by Deputy Chief Bob Bulliford. He attended the Northwestern University Center for Public Safety Executive Management Program. It's a very intensive, three-week-long program that is aimed at developing upper-level police managers so that they could better lead their department. He completed that on Friday, so I just want to highlight that outstanding performance that he did there, and just looking forward to great things with him in his department.
Thank you, Chief. And one more here. We're to that time of year where we're picking up leaves here as part of our August, right, August, excuse me, October pickup, and then kind of highlight, we're in that process now, but free leaf and branch pickup will continue, and then the next time period here will be November 10 through 12. So please schedule a pickup at mokina.org, where we have the star for the free leaf and branch pickup, or feel free to call in here at Village Hall to schedule that at 708-479-3900. Ladies here will do a wonderful job with you as always. We ask that the branches be bundled with string or twine at lengths of no more than four feet. Leaves need to be in bags, and we strongly encourage you to use some brown paper bags. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tomasowski. Village administrator comments.
That was that?
I'm sorry. Trustee comments. Trustee Angler.
Well, I'd like to congratulate Deputy Chief Bulliford. Quite an accomplishment. And also, Halloween's this Friday, trick-or-treat hours are 3 to 7. Please, please be careful, because I'm sure there'll be kids on e-bikes, scooters, walking, running, whatever else they could do out there. So please, please, please be careful. That's all I got. Thank you.
Trustee Germany?
I agree with Trustee Angler. Watch out for the little ones on scooters, and this ordinance couldn't happen fast enough for me. If we can see one little accident or something like that, yeah, watch out for the kids on Halloween, and it's getting dark early, so that's all I've got.
Trustee Gilbert?
No comments.
Okay. Trustee Clancy?
November 8, we'll see you there. Coffee with the mayor. See me behind the bar, making your coffee for you.
Trustee Bailey?
I'm just kind of encouraged with some of the work that we've done and some of the restaurants that have come in. We've got some activities coming up for the holidays, so it's just, I'm just kind of feeling a lot of pride for our little town at the moment, so just feeling that. That's all for me.
Thank you, Josh. Trustee Fedora?
Thank you. Just want to remind everybody regarding trick-or-treating, please make sure to turn on all of your outdoor lights, as many outdoor lights as you have, especially if you're one of those like I am in the older part of town where we have the mature trees, and so the streets are just a little bit darker, and we don't have sidewalks on all of our streets. So if you could just put on as many lights as possible, that would really, really help. And don't forget, if you're not going to be home, or if you don't wish to participate, save those little trick-or-treaters some steps and just put that sign on your front window. You can get it off of the homepage of mokina.org, and I believe you have put ones here as well. So do put those up. I don't think anyone has gotten agged from having that sign up, so fear not. Thank you very much.
Clerk Martini?
No, I'll pass for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, just a couple things. Trick-or-treats coming up. Please be safe out there. Make sure that your kids go in places you know. Make sure the candy's good. Keep an eye on it. Watch out for the scooters and all that other stuff also, like I said. November 8, Clancy's Brothers Coffee. Meet the mayor. I'll be there. Come and meet me, and I'll meet you. We'll talk, we'll have a cup of coffee, and free mugs as much as it lasts. So come first, get yourself a free coffee mug. So with that, motion to adjourn.
So I'll move second.
Motion, probably second. Clerk?
Trustee Angler.
Hi.
Trustee Fedora.
Hi.
Trustee Germany.
Hi.
Trustee Gilbert.
Hi.
Trustee Bailey.
Hi.
And Trustee Clancy.
Hi.
We are adjourned.